Meeting called to order. Roll call, please.
Councilman Quainer.
Here.
Councilman McBride.
Here.
Councilman Harrow.
Here.
Councilman Gann.
Here.
Councilman Hatmaker.
Here.
Councilwoman Magnus.
Here.
And Mayor McBride.
Here. Do I hear a motion for the approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. The prayer this evening will be given by Mr. McBride. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the opportunity to serve you and serve our city. God, I ask right now that you be with the folks in Nashville where the tragedies happened. I pray that you be with each of those families, those parents, and what they're going through, dear God. I pray that you just be near and dear to them. I pray that you be with police officers and those investigating, be with them and their family, protect them, dear God, I pray. I pray that you be with us tonight as we conduct the city business. I pray your blessings on this time. And God, I pray as your word asks, that if we ask for wisdom, that you will give it to us in abundance. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Jim. Do I hear a motion for the review and approval of minutes of the previous meeting dated February 27th, 2023?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. At this time, we'll recognize any visitors or citizens like to come to the podium and speak. State your name and address, please.
My name's Denise Palmer. I live on Maple Street, up on the hill.
Michael Foster, 606 Riverbend Road. And we are here tonight just to introduce ourselves to the council. We're the county commissioners for this district, and so I know most of y'all, but just wanted to come and introduce itself and, you know, bridge the gap that, you know, could be between the city and the county, but just offer anything we can do to help out. Want to have a good working relationship. We appreciate everything the city of Clinton does for us and does for the county, and our district's made up most of the city of Clinton. So anything we can do, work together, we want to be able to do that.
Right. And I would ditto all of that and just say I'm a newly elected official, and it's my honor to represent District Two, the city of Clinton, on the county commission. So you do a great job, and we want to work hard to work alongside of you to make Clinton the best place ever, right?
That's right. Any questions for Michael or Denise?
Easy, please.
Thank you, guys. I think we've all got... I was gonna make a comment, Michael, but just go on. No, I'm just saying I'm proud of the relationship we've had over the last, you know, ten or twelve years, and I know that will continue. So, thank you all. Anyone else? Did you have your... Okay. Would you like to make an amendment to the agenda? I'm joking. So it's under your report, right? Is it under your report? Okay. All right. Easy. I know you missed out on that African safari. Sorry, you're not. You're a little bit on edge. Communications from the mayor. I have two things. First of all, spring cleanup. I've gotten a couple of calls today on that. That is April 3rd. It's always the first Monday in April. So it is April 3rd. Dwayne, you want to talk about everything and anything you want to put out there? They'll pick up?
Or not pick up.
Terry Allen has a question.
We will take four tires, and before we hadn't took any batteries, we'll take those. Other than that, everything's pretty much the same. They'll just have it out for seven o'clock Monday morning, because once we make around, you know, we try not to have to go back.
Anything you don't take?
Refrigerators.
Paints, latex. I'm gonna take latex, too.
Yeah, chemicals that, you know, it's gonna be tucked to the...
Okay.
We don't take those.
They don't take that fifth tire either. Just got the four. Thank you, Dwayne. Also, got a memo from the Clinton Fire Department. I want to congratulate them for receiving a FEMA fire prevention and safety grant for $16,619, and we have a city's match of $830 for a total of $17,450, and that's going to go to what? Chief?
We do it probably pretty much through the city. Anyone lives in the city of resident, we usually furnish some smoke detectors.
Is there a certain number each house owner can get?
We... It depends on the size. We've went up to as many as four and five pounds of water, so.
Okay. So when will be... When can they start doing, coming by and picking those up?
It'll be a while, because we still have to go through FEMA, which can drag a little bit, but hopefully within a couple of months at the latest.
Okay. We'll announce it at the meeting, and I'm sure we can put it on social media, too. But congratulations to whoever did the grant. Thanks for taking the time to do it. Yeah, thanks, Archie, for... Good, good. That's all I have. So let's move on. Community reports? City School Board report? Scott? Right.
Kelly's out of town, so all I have for you is a budget amendment. Budget amendment number four should be in your packets, but I'll summarize for you. In the general purpose school fund, we are reallocating $175,000 from one line item to another line item, sort of what I call cleaning up the budget, and we are adding $24,000 in expenditures. That addition of $24,000 is funded by an increase in revenues. And the detail of the ins and outs in the budget are in the memo, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have on that. In the cafeteria fund and the federal projects fund, there is no requested budget amendment.
Hear a motion for approval for a budget amendment number four.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Clinton Regional Planning Commission report. Vice Mayor Gann.
The Clinton Regional Planning Commission and the Board of Zoning Appeals met on March 13th. The Board of Zoning and Appeals had two items. Applicant Justin Cody Oveley requesting lot width at building setback from 75 to 70 feet for property located at 442 Jarnigan Street, and then Ralph Smith, PLS, requesting lot size variance from 12,000 square feet to 11,716 square feet for property located at Beechwood Lane and Lee Road. Both of these were just simply property size adjustments and lot line adjustments, so they were both approved. Then the planning commission, the first item that you may have on your packet, W.J. Moore and Associates, was withdrawn. Second item, Wardland Surveying, requesting final plat review and approval for property located at 1111 Melton Hill Circle. And number three, applicant Ralph Smith requesting final plat review and approval for property located at Beechwood Lane and Lee Road. Both of those were property adjustments, changing property lines, adjoining properties, so they were approved. Point number four, Thomas Hicks Construction Company, Construction requesting site plan review and approval for property located at 2,000 North Charles Seavers Boulevard. This is, and some people, a lot of people will be happy about this, this is for an enlargement of the Hammer's parking lot. So that was approved. And number five, Cold Creek Surveying and Engineering requesting site plan review and approval for property located at 228 Fox Family Lane. This doesn't sound like it, but this is the Fox Car Wash addendum to their business up there. So that was approved. And then lastly, Anderson County Schools requesting site plan review approval for property located at Hillcrest Street and Dragon Drive. This is the site plan for the softball field. It's been in a great deal of, let's say, discussion for some time, and pending agreement through legal channels, it was approved by the planning commission.
Any questions for Vice Mayor Gann?
So the Fox thing, it talks about a photo booth in here, but is it a car wash?
You know, when you get online and you pull up a car, and you'll have different angles, that's what that is. Provides that, because someone asked that on the planning commission.
It sounds funny, because it says Cold Creek Surveying, but it's a car wash.
Okay.
Yeah.
Was Brandon, was he the one that should be looking at the fees that we have and looking what other cities are doing around us?
The planning commission.
Yeah. Okay. When's that? When do you expect that to be done?
I'm not sure. I mean, he's still also working with the stormwater issue, and I know plans submittal, he's doing reviews on that. We got a bunch of plans came in today on some new projects, so.
And I may go ahead and talk about Green McAdoo. If you haven't been seeing anything in the news or whatever, they are in the process of putting up the exhibit from the Smithsonian, and it is a fantastic exhibit on voting, and I think if I'm not mistaken, it'll be there through the month of June. But it's already unloaded, and they're in the process of setting it up in the gym, and it is... I know Adam is very excited about having it. And then he's also going to be beginning podcasts, and I think Trey Hargit is his first podcast guest, and he's working on getting our secretary, our Speaker of the House as a second guest. So he's pulling some connections.
Any other questions for Larry? Thanks, Larry. Clinton Utilities Board report. Councilman McBride.
Really nothing to speak of. You see, the revenue and expense summary, and I commented last month, there was an issue. Y'all didn't get the report, but we were talking about December, how that CUB was in the negative for December, but that was a result of the weather and how TVA charges, again, TVA charges for the biggest one hour of power in the month. And so if you remember back in December, we had a real cold snap there in Christmas, but earlier in the month, it was pretty relatively warm. But then you can see from your report that CUB recovered nicely in January. So nothing out of the ordinary in the report.
Any questions for Jim? Thanks, Jim. Other boards and community reports? Catherine?
Good evening. I just have a few quick updates for you guys. Tomorrow night, our Tasty Tuesdays return, so the food trucks will be back downtown from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. They'll be there for the next four Tuesdays. And then if you don't already have it on your calendar, put April 22nd on there for our Mosaic Arts Festival. We've got a really great lineup of lots of different art that'll showcase both kids from Anderson County and Clinton City schools. And then lastly, I have some guests with me. I brought some Clinton High School students that make up our youth board for Historic Downtown Clinton, and they have some things that they want to tell you. So y'all go ahead and come up. Hello, my name is Ainsley Barker. I'm a member of the Historic Downtown Clinton Youth Board, and today I just want to tell you guys a little bit about what we're doing and who we are. So last year, I started interning with Catherine with Historic Downtown Clinton, and I started getting more involved in the community, and we started thinking about how there's a ton of kids who actually want to get more involved in what's going on inside the city of Clinton. So we came together, we came up with this idea for the board, and then we went into the classrooms. And so as we met and we started to grow our program, this is the mission statement we came up with. The Clinton High School Historic Downtown Clinton Youth Board will leave a legacy on our unique small town for future generations by assisting in revitalization and preservation while allowing history to shape the future for our community. So that's what we're trying to do here as a youth board together. And so when we were getting involved and we started doing these things, I came across a grant from actprep.com, and this grant is for $5,000, and in order to win this grant, we had to create a video of what we would do with the money and submit it. So now that we've submitted it, what we need is your help. In order to win the grant, we have to get the most Facebook likes. And so what we need you and the town of Clinton to do is to come together and like our video on the actprep.com Facebook page, and for an extra vote for our town, you need to like their Facebook page, too. So like our video and like their Facebook page. So now I'm going to hand it over to Matt, who's going to tell you a little bit more about what we're doing in the community.
Good evening. My name's Matt Chisholm. Just want to say thank you for letting us talk about what we're about. We are currently making a podcast about Clinton, just about our history and just our daily, just day-to-day events that are going on. Our first podcast is going to be about Paul Turner and his legacy and his importance in the community. We are planning to interview Larry Gann, who was actually baptized by Paul Turner at a very young age, and we're also going to interview the current pastor at First Baptist Church, Danny Chisholm, which I'm just very excited to do. I think it's going to be a great opportunity to, for people just to listen and hear about our history and just our current day-to-day events. We're also working on an app that'll help coincide with the landmarks that are kind of around Clinton. It's still a work in progress. We don't have a name for nothing, for that right now, but we are currently getting that worked on, so thank you.
My name is Ethan Bray, and permission to approach?
Yes.
Thank you.
Are you on the mock trial, too?
Thank you, Mr. Bray.
We'd appreciate your vote on our Facebook page and on the paper I just gave you. If you go to the QR code and vote for our, I want to say ACT Prep little program we got going on, and with that money, we'd plant cherry blossom trees, and we'd do a little art installation downtown.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you guys have any questions for our youth board?
No, but I love it. It's awesome.
They're doing a really great job, and we're really proud that there are so many students in our community who said our town is unique, and we want to be involved and help. And so we have about 18 students that work with us, and we're just, we're really proud of them. So thank you for giving them the opportunity.
General Governor report. Mr. Houck.
Thank you, Mayor. Projects and activities, just a little update on one I haven't given in several months. That's our TAP grant, Phase One and Two. We are finally at the final push to complete the construction plans and submit them. We will be meeting probably sometime mid-April with our beautification committee to revisit those plans, and hopefully sometime in May, back with the community to look at, show some of that to them. We've done that a couple of times, but due to the holdup with TDOT, those things kept changing, so we've kind of held those meetings off till we could get to the point where we know we're really ready to submit them this time, and I think we're finally there. So hopefully we'll be getting that project. Right now, we're still hoping to look at probably around July 1st to go to bid, so we're still probably three or four months out, but we think unless another red flag comes up from TDOT, we're, we may be looking at a start date now.
What are you looking at doing? Market Street first now?
We don't know. That's something I'll work with merchants, and that's something that I'll work with them on. We want to be least disruptive to their business. At the, when we first started it, we started broad and worked the other way. Then when we had the first delay, we would start at Market Street and work the other way to try to, try to get which season we want it to disrupt. You know, it probably depends on what our start date looks like. If we bid it in July, and it looks like we're going to start it in October, we'll probably be back looking at starting on broad and working that way to miss the fall Christmas season, would be my guess.
What's the total time it's been so long? I forgot.
We projected 12 months for the project. So that's a little update on that. I know we got Tasty Tuesday starting tomorrow. We were hoping to have, that we approved, I guess, last month or maybe even the month before, the ceiling and striping of the Commerce Street parking lot. It's just been way too cold. It's got to be really 65, 70 degrees or warmer for several days for them to be able to seal it and strip it. It's just been way too cold. Last weekend was 20 degrees, so we have not got that done yet. And it may, I think it's supposed to be close to freezing again tomorrow night, so I don't know when we'll be able to get it done, so we'll just make do. Finance, defer to Chris?
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. So as of the end of February, we were 67% of the way through our fiscal year, and with that, we've collected 95% of our revenues, but keep in mind, a lot of that was the second tranche of the ARPA funds. However, I can say, as of today, we're over 100% collected on our property tax as budgeted. For expenditures, we're right on the mark at 66.4% of expenditures spent. You'll see in the report, fund balances have not, have not changed, if at all, from last month. Speaking of local option sales tax, we're, for the year, we're 12 and a half percent over where we were this time last year, and particularly for, it's, we count it as January's collection, which is the latest month, where we're actually 17% better than the previous month last year. So next month, you'll see a fairly large budget amendment come from me, and that's just a true-up things, mainly capital purchases that we've already approved. Just get the budget numbers to follow those, so be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Chris? Think everything's looking really well?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Chris, got several capital purchases here. Kind of take them, let's see, Police Department, request authorization to purchase two new Dodge Durango PPV vehicles from Chrysler Jeep Dodge Ram of Columbia at state contract pricing at a total cost of $80,034, and two unmarked vehicle packages with installation at a total cost of $13,380 from Off Duty Depot. Both purchases will be through the violent crime intervention grant. Both vehicles will be for the detective division.
Hear a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel. Also, two new 2023 Dodge Durango patrol package vehicles from Chrysler Jeep Dodge Ram of Columbia at state contract pricing for the Police Department, capital outlay budget for the patrol division at a cost of $79,184, and two marked vehicle packages with installation from On Duty Depot at a cost of $26,086. Instillate... Okay, that's it. Sorry.
Hear a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Let me ask. So the first one comes from a grant, second one comes from our monies that we, the city's saved over the years. Okay, awesome.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
And just a note, the two there, and myself, Councilman Quainer, we were talking about before, the meaning, that, that just really, last year, we bought two, but that replaced two vehicles that actually got totaled in crashes. So really, that just kind of catches us up. Really, there's still a couple behind, so we may look at maybe doing something else even later on this year, because we really don't want to get behind like we did 10 years ago.
We've been there. Don't go back there.
Get backwards again, so we may look at something again a little bit later. So just as a note.
And you know this. I don't think you would. Don't spend any money. You don't have to.
Right.
But let's don't go back to the way we were.
Right. Yeah, because the maintenance gets eating this up, and we don't want to do that, so we'll take a look.
Okay, just a note. Okay, also, request authorization to purchase 10 UHF portable radios and accessories to replace older obsolete models at a total amount of $18,298 from Motorola Solutions through Metro Communications. Purchase will be through state contract pricing and from the public, or from the Police Department's capital outlay budget.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? This is a clarifying question, Roger. What's the difference, and I'm being serious when I ask this, so what's the difference when you do a radio that we pay for and a radio that 911 would pay for? Because I know in the past, they paid for radios, I thought.
Usually what they pay for is a dispatch.
Okay, so it's more dispatch center, not anything in a car or vehicle or anything like that? Okay. Okay. I knew there was an explanation, but I just, I wasn't sure about that. Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel. Public Works Department, request authorization to purchase a 2023 52-inch zero-turn mower from Smith Turf and Irrigation at a total cost of $11,454.63. This will replace a 20-year-old mower.
Hear a motion for approval?
So moved.
So moved.
You get a motion and a second? Any discussion? Roger, in things like this, where, and again, you might have to remind me, like, zero-turn mowers, there's people in town that probably have a zero-turn mower, but they're not on the list that we could ask them for a competing offer?
Usually not on state contract. If they're not on state contract.
Okay.
Can't touch.
Well, is there any way in the future, is it hard to get on a state contract? It is? Okay. Well, I just want to, especially more people listening to this, it's like, well, why don't they buy a local?
No, if they can touch it, I mean, if they can match it.
Yeah.
And we bought a few vehicles that way. We're Rusty Wallace and them, but a lot of times, especially on stuff like this, they can't touch.
That we made, but can we do the same thing for mowers and things like that?
I think if they match the price.
But did we go to that step to ask? Maybe should we?
But a lot of times, they don't have the commercial equipment to take it.
Well, this is to this way. Maybe in the future, we can, this is courtesy to ask.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we bought several, I mean.
So it's a certain price you don't have to go through state, right? Okay. All right. Just asking. It's been a while since we've done this, so. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Thank you. Request authorization to purchase a Bobcat T-six-six T-four track loader at a total cost of sixty thousand two sixty-five ninety. This will replace a twenty-three-year-old model that will be handed off to the Recreation Department. And also request authorization to purchase various accessories for the track loader and a Bobcat trailer at a cost of thirty-nine thousand four seventy-three. This will be also purchased through state contract pricing and from the Public Works capital outlay budget.
Here a motion for approval?
So moved.
You got a motion in a second? They did it at the same time. I think you wanted to tell you right there. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
And just to clarify, some of these accessories, so JB and Dwayne don't fight over them, would be shared between both departments. One of them will be a stump grinder that could be used on both Bobcats that each department will have. And, you know, we were talking today, probably over the last three years, we've probably just in the Rec Department spent five, six thousand dollars on paying a contractor to grind stumps up that we can do our own. So sometimes some of these accessories actually will save us money in the long run. That's all I have on that.
JB doesn't get anything? Little? I know you asked. I know Little asked, but you might not understand a comment.
Fire Department's got several fire trucks over the last three or four years.
There you go.
And JB's got a couple new parks. So they've did pretty well.
Anything else, Roger?
That's all I have, man.
Any questions for Roger?
Roger, just a question. I noticed in the news that the Knox County Commission passed a resolution to the state legislature requesting that they decrease their, you know, the amount of sales tax that they're getting. It has no power other than just a resolution saying, hey, please do this. I don't know if it would be beneficial. There is no power to it other than saying, hey, guys, we need this money back. Would there be any value to us passing that resolution?
It probably wouldn't hurt. I mean, we, myself and Bill went to the Legislative Conference last, two weeks ago today. And all indications, especially from the Lieutenant Governor, was, and I guess I learned a new term down there, that the Senate bill and House bill both was probably will get passed, but put behind the budget. I wasn't sure what that meant at the time, but that meant it's probably will get passed, but not funded this year. Possibly could get funded later on if the funds were there. I really didn't understand that completely. But, you know, once again, it's, you know, the state shared revenue going back to the two thousand two formula. I know just for the city of Clinton, it would, it would mean possibly about a hundred and eighty-eight thousand a year of local shared sales tax. It's actually money spent here in Clinton that we would get back that the state government's getting right now. And it's money before the state changed the formula that was coming to Clinton. And I think Oak Ridge would be over a half million they would get. I think Rocky Top was around thirty thousand that Rocky Top would be getting. So it's a, it's a push that all cities are lobbying for to keep the money local. That the state government has a pretty, pretty big bank account right now. And that this money should stay local. So all means, we could, we could do something in the April meeting and send it to our local legislatures.
I don't think it could hurt.
Well, one thing they asked too, they asked, there's a, there's a video that went out, and I think they asked seventeen mayors to kind of read a script to position that. And I was one of the ones, I don't know, caught the bottom of the bucket, I guess. But I think we kind of made that, that known, that City Clinton supports this. And I think it was, as a whole, I think TML kind of was behind that, just kind of the push from the city standpoints, all the cities that we support this. And of course, we would. But just, that might help. I think that might kind of check, check the box, so to speak, on that. Anything else?
All right.
You want to talk about the pool, give us the update on the pool grant?
We're still, we're still waiting on to get the final documents to send to the T-Deck. And Health Department should just be any day. I mean, the last update we got was about two weeks ago, and they were finalizing everything. So I wouldn't be surprised just any day that we should be getting them.
You want to say a couple of words about the grants you're going to be applying for?
Yes, we have been working with Congressman Fleschman's staff and some local community leaders on some possible other federal funding that would be, we'd be applying for in early twenty-twenty-four. The funds would be available in twenty-twenty-five. But it'd be for some funding, possibly for the community center renovations and also for some renovations to some areas of South Clinton, possibly the recreation facilities there and possibly some sidewalk additions. So we've just kind of started that process.
Good. I think everybody would support that. Anything else for Roger?
I'd, of course, make this comment anytime we spend money of good amount. And I've got two comments. Number one, appreciate city staff. Lawn mower that's lasted twenty years, that's good maintenance and people respecting the equipment and taking care of it. So police cars, same thing. But it's pretty awesome to be able to spend over two hundred thousand dollars. And I took out the grant vehicles. But tonight, Council, we just spent and bought these vehicles and equipment, and we're not having to borrow money. And I just think that's, that's awesome. And I will continue to talk about that for years to come because, I mean, city staff does a good job managing its funds. But I think as Council, we do a good job, you know, spending those funds. And that's, there's not, it's not always been that way. And so that's my two cents. But I'm very proud to be able to do that and talk about buying new police cars if we need to. But buying those used police cars out of Missouri, fifty thousand miles on them, I mean, that's, that was, we were in a bad spot and had to do it. But that's not a good road to be going down.
It was a conversation we had thirty minutes ago, an hour ago.
I was watching Smokey and the Manette last night. Thank you, those police cars, y'all running up to Michigan and back in twenty-four hours.
Went to Missouri back in twenty-four, and we just do that.
Oh, Lord. Thank you, Roger. Yeah, thank you, Roger. Any old business for us? Any new business? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Please adjourn.